Showing up with some feeds, so that'll help.
She got many cow?
There's a lot of cattle there.
Really?
She must have eighty head of them.
Yeah.
Really?
When I talked to Bill, her renter, he said that it was about a, about a hundred head all together.
Bill Larson?
Yeah. So, I did go out and look there.
Were you able to talk to anybody?
Just Bill, just Bill the renter. He's calling her, he was gonna call her, he was in Idaho when I talked to him, and he was back Sunday morning, and he's calling her, he's gonna call her that afternoon. And when he did get ahold of her, he was gonna call me back, so that I could do a follow-up call. And we agreed, there's, there's quite a bit's gotta be done there.
Yeah.
In his previous conversation with her, she, she was starting to kind of acknowledge that.
Good. Am I ever heading in right direction?
Yeah.
Morning, Phyllis.
Good morning.
Hi, Phyllis.
Hopefully, we're less frustrating than last week.
Yeah.
I had a couple since then that were about that way, that were very satisfying. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, start with Budge of Legions. Roll call.
Hockler. Hockert. Here. Smith. Here. Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here. Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing an approval agenda.
What do you, what do you?
Resolution for bridge inspections through this year.
Move to approve with the addition. I'll second it.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Phyllis, did you hear what he was adding?
Slightly, something about resolution for bridges.
Yeah.
Microphone on would help.
It was on.
Oh, okay.
It's just muffled, so it's for bridge inspections.
Very good.
Hearing no discussion, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Hockert.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion approved. Approve minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
A motion is second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I have one change I'd like to see, and I, I did go back to the recording to look. And it's the very last two lines of, on page five. You know, where it, so what it, what it should read is that the county will have to, what I said is, the county will have to negotiate a cost share with the city of Vermillion. Apparently, somebody said to the city manager that I had said that the city would pay thirty percent. And so, I feel it's important to go back and change that based on what I actually said. And the city manager did say that based on past usage, the city's share is likely to be around thirty percent. But I certainly did not say that, that the cost share was thirty percent, I said it would have to negotiate. So that word is important.
Move to approve with that correction.
Second.
A motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Hockert.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard?
Yes.
Yeah.
Dan Christoffersen with the Clay County Historical Society. Just a couple of things relative to the building expansion jail courthouse project. Been thinking about the roof since Betty mentioned that last time. No matter what really happens going forward, the roof is gonna need to be fixed. So I would like to request that you seriously consider getting that done. And I'm not sure, maybe it's already been done, Bob, but John Walker is pretty good at that, because, not at doing the job necessarily, but at organizing it, because he did it for Trinity Lutheran Church a year ago, and that was a big commercial roof project. So if he hasn't been consulted or asked about the roof, I think that would be a good local resource to, to visit with, especially since he's on the committee already. So the roof, I think, is a serious issue, and that will help a lot to make other issues not quite so serious if we can get a handle on the roof. As far as the jail and law enforcement center, had my tour, had my video tours, we've always felt like that needs to be done and needs to be a priority, and the historical society is in agreement with that, that the jail and the law enforcement center need, need something done. We, we feel like it could be done on this site, we, we have room to add, add on, new, go across the street, acquire houses. I think that could be done considerably cheaper than acquiring land off-site, and it would be probably a lot more convenient for the sheriff's department. But at any rate, something needs to be prioritized on, on the jail for sure. And then finally, on any type of a bond issue that will be coming up here this spring, the Clay County Historical Society would certainly like to reiterate our offer to work together on that. It's a lot easier to work together on a bond issue than it is to be split up on it and have people working both sides of it. So I think you know that our, one of our requirements would be that this building be saved as part of county government and continue to be the center for county government, at least for the main part of it, even if you do something off-site with the jail. And if this bond issue includes that, we will be help, happy to work our contacts and to work as hard as we can to make that happen for the county, so that the bond issue is able to be passed. So that's all I had today, and thank you for all your hard work.
Any other visitors? Hearing none, Rod, Highway Materials bid.
Yeah.
Rod's Mike.
Thank you, Phyllis. You have my recommendation. My bid recommendation list. So I guess, any questions on it?
Give me, we bought stuff through Beetle County in the past, haven't we? Usually Beetle County, we've always done.
Yes, we've done that for fifteen years. Yeah, with, with Beetle County's bid, it's actually, True North is the company. But we get the same price for Culver's as Beetle County does, and here in Culver is, or True North is right across the street from Beetle County, and we get them, we get the same shipping here, so. And there's not just Culver's, there's, now we're putting in those metal bridges, you know, we got three of them. Well, we've got five in the county, but three recently, the modular ones. And they're included in that, they're the only ones that do it too, so. They've saved us a lot of money, those, those jobs he's had.
Yeah.
Were there any surprises, either up or down on pricing?
Like the metal culvert, it went up a little bit, but wasn't a surprise, 'cause right towards here, the last couple, three months, iron prices started going up, everything was kind of down. But no, nothing, nothing shocking, I guess, and I give you a few, well, like on the metal culvert, I think I did a couple of years of what they were, and they kind of steadily been going up. Find it here, yeah. But no, nothing over the top, I guess.
I guess I'll move to approve the recommendation of the highway superintendent.
I second that. A motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Hockert.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes. Emergency relief, relief contract amendments.
So these are what we signed a couple of weeks ago, and they found out there was a error. And the error is a good thing, we gained thirty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents over that last agreement. So I recommend that you sign it.
So move for the amendments?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Hockert.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes. What was it again that you added? The bridge inspection.
We have three bridges left in the county that are in bad enough shape that need to be inspected every year. So I have a resolution. The state requires a resolution that we pick an engineering firm from this list I have. And in the past, since oh-five, we've had Johnson Engineering doing our bridge inspection. So I would like to recommend that we have Johnson do the year. And like I said, it's just for these three bridges. And then next year, we'll have to do it again for the whole entire system.
Move to pick Johnson Engineering to do the bridge inspections.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion?
And just so you know, this is a state funded program, we're required to pay twenty percent. It's eighty, twenty, just like it has been in the past, and it's, this will be very minimal amount for this year.
Does this need to list those three bridges we're gonna do, or?
Oh, yeah, I got a list here, but it's not on here, it doesn't have to be on here. No, no, they, they sent all that. I can tell you where the bridges are. The three bridges, one of them is off of Norwegian Avenue, on three oh, three, on the River Bridge. One of them is north of, about Dale'sburg Church. Dale'sburg is the one, not in Hope City, right?
The Baptist church.
Yep, okay, that one's right downhill from that one.
Yeah.
And the other one is out here by John Wasslin's old place, goes over the river. Like, if you were to head over to nineteen from, from the Curves, three oh nine street, three oh eight street, I'm sorry, comes off nineteen, if you go straight east, by Bob Redler's old place, down across the river bottom, there's a bridge there, that's one of them yet.
So there's a pretty good chance they're gonna close in there. They're getting pretty rough shit.
Well, the one up on the north end of, by the Dale'sburg Baptist church, that, yeah, you can't get to it unless it's dry.
Right, or, and Hellers, yeah, on three oh three.
Right.
Well, you can't get to any of them unless it's dry, it's all dirt roads.
Well, you can get to the east side of the one by Wasslin's, but the other side's usually underwater.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Hockert.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes. Ditch board.
Oh, I got a ditch board.
Sorry.
We got a couple to mention. Received two-week notice from our mechanic and shop foreman, it'll be done on the nineteenth of this month, so we'll see, add in the paper for mechanic shortly. So. And one other question, just got a phone call before I come. Clay County Sportsman Group wanted to put a sign on, in the right-of-way on one of our signposts, where it says the Clay County Park to the south. Told them I, as far as I know, this Clay County Sportsman Group is just a name, that's a private deal, it's not a county affiliated thing, right? And we're not supposed to allow any private signs in the right-of-way. So I didn't know if, I just wanted to make sure that that group, I know it says Clay County, but I didn't know.
Yeah, they're not affiliated with us.
Yeah, so basically, the answer with that would be no, I would, yeah.
Yeah, is that our rule, is that a state rule?
That's, that's actually statute. No private or business signs in the right-of-way.
It's in our zoning too.
Yeah, it pops, what pops to mind is the Hike's Family Farm ones that are in the right-of-way up on the bypass.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't know what the town's you. Line is.
It's on the state, it's on the bypass, it's on the highway. And I just wanna make sure it's consistent here.
Yeah, see, we, we've had numerous people have to remove signs from the road ditch, advertising like a private business. I usually don't have to find them, somebody will call, tell me.
See, this is, this is one of the blue signs, it's a highway, I assume they must've gone through the highway department to do that, state highway department to put that Hike's Family Farm.
Yeah, well, they, they do advertise for businesses in there. You know, like if you come to the interstate, they'll say Burger Cave, McDonald's, all that stuff, you know, in, on interstate signs, so I guess I don't know how.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying for the sake of consistency, should at least look into what, what's real. If it's on our, in our ordinances, that would supersede anyway, I guess.
Yeah, because our ordinance would say any business or anything has to be out of the right-of-way.
And even like political signs, all that's stated in there.
Yeah.
'Cause we went through that last year.
So, no.
Yeah.
And they could put a sign out on the fence line, okay, there's one there already, it's parallel with the road, that's on the, right at their gate.
I just, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Are we, is Dan retiring, or are we losing him?
No. Quit. I got his two-week notice last Friday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Ditch board?
Now would've been ditch board. I'll second it.
A motion is second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Hockert.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, we're in ditch board, Yankton Clay Ditch Cleanout. You want Brad to start?
Yeah. He had a previous bid opening, so, yeah, with Brad.
Are you with us, Brad? Say no.
He's muted right now.
I am with you, it just took me a minute to figure out the system here.
The Yankton Clay Ditch Cleanout, you wanna speak on that?
Um, I, I, I do, so where we're at is, so the contractor's done cleaning up, or, 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 or thereabouts, I have a pay request where I held back some for, you know, the, the property owner there that we're, we're still working with for, for permission, and then the ten percent retainer, so, so I'll have that in. And I guess, was there any forward progress on talking to, to her?
Whoops.
Um, yeah, I, I visited with her renter, and I did that on last week, Wednesday or Thursday. He was out of town, but he, I visited with him again on Sunday when he got back, and he was going to call her and then get back to me. He was going to appraise her, it was kind of a serious situation. I went out myself on Saturday and went down along the ditch, you know, I just looked at it. Rod and I had done a drive-by from the east end of that, that stretch. And once I got down and looked at it from the middle, it's, it's worse than I thought, for sure.
Yeah, they're, they're right on the bank there, they're, they are.
Yeah, there's a number of them need to be taken out. It, it could be that we could remove them and trim them back up to near the top of the berm, but there's a bunch that really are gonna obstruct the flow if we have any debris float down and get caught in those low, low-hanging branches. So I, I agree, we're in pretty, pretty dire straits to fix that. And the renter was going to, he's already gotten her to kind of move along about removing part of the trees. He was gonna push her a little harder and then get back to me, and then I, I was gonna give her a call. She's, he gave me a phone number that should work.
Oh, okay, good, good.
Hopefully, we can get that done in the next few days and get back to you, and so we can wrap it up as quickly as possible.
And if you could, yeah, just, you know, give me a call or have Rod, or send me a text or something with what we know, 'cause, you know, as soon as we kind of, we know, we'll, we'll, we'll go in there, you know, rather than wait, wait till a meeting, if these guys don't mind.
And when I was there too, you know, that concrete bridge on the, what, four fifty-fifth, right at the east end, or the west end of that problem, that, that has kind of a low berm, actually, it's got a, it's partially obstructed the throat on the upstream side. There's a kind of a dirt dune, at least there. And so that's a, that's quite an obstruction too, Brad. We may need to do something with that, at least get down in the bottom and clean that out. There's, that, the throat of that bridge is partially obstructed on the upstream side, and.
Oh, oh, okay, what, what was the street again, and I'll jot that down.
Four fifty-fifth. It's the one up right on the west end of this particular property we're talking about, four five five Avenue.
Okay.
It's made kind of a low-head dam there.
Okay.
Really, that bridge oughta be replaced when you get right down to it, and I don't, I don't know whose responsibility that would be.
It's ours, but still at forty-ton load limit, so it's been brought up quite a few times in the past, but, I mean, they could still get over it with a loaded, legally loaded semi, so.
Yeah.
I know it's narrow, but.
I, I'm almost more concerned about it obstructing the ditch. And I haven't been out there, of course, you probably have during high-flow times, how much of a, a dam or a weir that it acts like. But I, I think we oughta be thinking about replacing it just for those reasons. And, and because it's kind of an obstruction to heavier loads.
Yeah, unfortunately, the highway department has to bring that expense.
Yeah.
I've brought that up many times, but doesn't fall on deaf ears. It just is interpreted in a different way than I look at it, so.
Well, that's, sure.
We'll look at it.
Yeah, that's what I know so far, is that I did notice that, that's something we should take care of also, that, clean that out underneath the bridge.
I guess what we have done there is, everything up and below it is eight-foot culvert, so. You know, to me, it looks like it has a bigger area than an eight-foot pipe, I think.
Is it?
Yeah.
So, but we'll take a look at it, I'll have Brad look at it.
Yeah.
Anything else, Brad, on the cleanout?
No, 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 that's it, so, and I'll, I'll get with, with Dana on, well, I'll fill him in that, on what we talked about, and then I've tried to visualize that, but I'll, I'll have to take a peek at that. Maybe I'll look at it with Dana, and we'll get that earth moved out of there.
I, I took a few pictures of it, Brad, so we can, maybe I can get those forwarded to Rod, and then he can forward it to you or something.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be perfect.
Okay.
Pay application for Clay Creek Ditch Berm.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sign off now, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what we did this last week.
We were looking into, see, we thought we had paid it, but apparently we hadn't.
So I'll make a motion to pay the, to Weeman Construction for the berm restoration.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Hockert.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes. Motion passes. Anything else for ditch board?
Move to come out. Second.
A motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Hockert.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yeah, we're in regular session. I see I missed the weed supervisor, Dennis isn't coming? He just wants us.
Yeah.
Sign for the weed spraying contract, DOT contract.
Yeah, we do that, weed department does that every year.
I move to approve that we, that chairman signed the weed spraying contract with state.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Hockert.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes. Josh here.
Thought it came in comes in the door.
Wherever, if you wanna sit there and use the microphone? Just, you don't have anything else, right, Rod? So Josh is with the South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit. And if you just wanna pop the button up, that's on, there you go.
Hello, I am Joshua Shalom, I'm with Legislative Audit, and I'm here to let you know that the audit of Clay County for the two years ended December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, has been completed and is ready for publication following this meeting. What I have for you today is a few documents that I believe you had, if you had a chance to look over. Prior to this, first one is the management letter, which serves to communicate to the board if we identify deficiencies in internal control or violations of laws, rules, regulations, provisions of contracts or grant agreements. And click on the second page, note that we did not, we did not disclose any deficiencies in the internal control that were material weakness or significant deficiency. Those would be included as written comments in our published audit report, so we did not have anything for the audit report this year, for this audit period. And then also, there were no deficiencies in internal control that I thought was important enough to be brought to the attention of the board. So also, a very good improvement over the last period as well. And there were no violations of laws, rules, regulations that were in the audit report. And there were no violations of laws, rules, regulations that were in the audit report or that I felt that important enough to bring to your attention as well. So good, uh, clean audit for this audit period. The next letter I have for you is a required communication, uh, for those directors of government. And this basically just outlines, uh, our view on accounting practices. If we ran across any, um, difficulties or disagreements during the audits, which we did not. Um, it talks about corrected, uncorrected misstatements to the financial statements. There were no uncorrected material misstatements to the financial statements. So all they, there are all the, uh, misstatements that I did find were corrected before publishing the report. Um, there were no consultation with any other counties that I was aware of. And basically I didn't have any troubles in completing this audit for this period. So the last thing I have is a letter from the county, uh, to our department, which, uh, basically says the county filled its responsibilities in completing this audit, made all information and requests available to me and my team. And that I did not, talks about certain disclosures that are required to that I included a notion of financial statements. And so I, I got all the information and cooperation that I needed. And so I just need the signature from the chairman and the auditor on that, um, that letter. And that is all I have for you. Unless there's any other questions for me regarding the audit. Big improvement over your last audit, which is, which is very nice. So, so I'm liking what worked very well. Yes. There were a few written comments actually published in the prior, our report. So I don't have anything published or to bring to your attention. So.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks.
So I need a motion to sign if nobody else.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Yes. Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes. Motion passes.
And if I can, I just want to congratulate Kerry, um, on a really, really good, clean audit. Good job.
Building project and bond election discussion. Anybody have anything to discuss on that? Bob, you had sent out an email this morning. Was it yesterday? When is the listening? Okay.
I was finally able to get a, get a public, uh, listening meeting confirmed yesterday. Uh, we chose the, uh, large meeting room on four H building. I think it's going to be large enough, um, to accommodate us. The tough thing about arranging that kind of a meeting is trying to anticipate turnout. And, uh, I looked at 11 or 12 different possibilities. And, uh, this one seemed to work the best for potential social distancing. Uh, we'll have signs of, uh, encouraging, you know, the wearing of mask. In terms of how the meeting, um, is, uh, going to happen, I see, uh, Dick, are you there? Can you explain what, what you would like to do with that meeting?
Uh, yes, I have a big trust for with Tegra. Uh, so what I suggest recommend on that is having, uh, what I call stations. So there's a, you know, with each, with each option, for example, building on the existing, uh, property, expanding that, have that be a table. Have, uh, you know, a new, so, and we're going to try and work through those options, uh, with the committee, uh, meeting on Thursday night. And how many there are, but there's probably three or four of them. So we'd have three or four tables set up, uh, presenting the different schemes and then have an architect stationed at each one that can describe, uh, you know, describe what is included in that particular scheme along with, uh, the price for doing it. Um, and then, and also set up for kind of the operational issues that, that, um, Andy could, uh, could man. And so the idea on that one is that people when they have operational questions, they could, uh, discuss that with Andy. And then, you know, the people who have been doing this before, people will, you know, it, it, it sounds really formal, like there's a table and an architect and a group of people standing, talking about it. Well, reality is it's, it doesn't quite go uh, quite like that. There's people though, the people that will listen and will ask questions about one and kind of go from one table to the next. And then there'll be other, a lot of other conversations. That's where I'd encourage the, you know, the committee to, to be there and, you know, mingle and answer questions. Cause this committee is, I'd say unusually involved. Uh, there's a, you know, it's, it's very involved in the, I think any of the committee members, uh, it's been a very, you know, everyone's participated a lot and everybody knows, knows a lot about the different options that have been, you know, studied and, you know, rehashed and vetted. And so I think having the, you know, committee members, you know, there to, you know, answer questions and, uh, you know, talk to the people they know. And all that, just the whole intent of it is just simply get the data that's been collected and the things that we've learned and all the studying and pricing and everything that we've done, you know, make that available to the public.
Well, you have some type of sign in that also asks who they're representing?
Yeah, we should turn to that.
The meeting will start at seven. Um, I don't anticipate, Dick, I don't anticipate, um, any speechifying except for a greeting. Uh, give out some instructions to those that show up to visit each table. Uh, interact with the architects, interact with the, uh, committee members. We will ask them for, um, any written suggestions that they might have. Um, and, um, our committee will reconvene and go from there.
Yeah, I think that, I think that sounds good. Cause I think, you know, if there's a group that kind of gets there right at the beginning, maybe we have, you know, uh, one of the architects give a little bit of an overview. Um, but if people kind of, kind of sky, you know, kind of come in, uh, if there's not many people there, like right at seven o'clock, we just let it kind of happen at the tables. The one thing we do want to emphasize though is we want, we want their suggestions, as you mentioned about, we want those in writing. Because what happens is if we don't have that, you know, these architects, they'll have, they'll get all their comments from, um, from people they're talking to, but it, it's really hard to manage and, and sort those out unless we have them in writing. So if they can, if they can jot down their comment, that's, or comments, that's, that's really helpful.
One, one suggestion I'd make is that, um, we, I, I, I don't know, uh, whether there's a place we could set up a, a website for people to make comments after the fact as well. Um, I know when the National Park Service does, um, you know, their, uh, design proposals, um, they do that because what happens is a lot of people leave the meeting and they get an idea and they wish they had said it. And, um, you know, the park service finds they get some, some really good feedback that way. Um, so if on that, that piece of paper that you hand people to write their comments on there, if there's also a, uh, a, a web, uh, place where they can, they can drop comments, um, when they've had time to think about it, uh, that's always helpful too.
We had a question. Go ahead, Dick.
I just, that's a good suggestion. Uh, is that something that you could arrange on the county website?
Um, our county website is pretty basic. I don't think it has the function for that.
If, if nothing else, we can provide an email address where we ask people to.
Yeah, we definitely could do that. That would be easy.
Yeah, maybe we do that and have them go to you, Bob. So then all the comments go to you. Cause you're the one that's gonna, you know, you know.
I'm not sure I've got a computer big enough to do that. That's a possibility. Sure. Sure.
Okay.
So we had a question of how is this going to be advertised?
Well, I have, uh, contacted, um, the plane talk. There will be two ads and two different issues of the broadcaster. There'll be an ad, um, in the, um, I mean, excuse me, a story in the, uh, plane talk. And, uh, we've even talked about making up some posters and put them up.
I have also, um, this morning created a Facebook event and also put it on the county's website. So hopefully that'll draw in some people.
Remember the VCDC Monday Messenger?
January, uh, January, March 18th, 7:00 PM, four H building. Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, the Monday Messenger is a good suggestion too. And, and I wonder if they posted on the city website since they're sharing this, sharing this with us.
Well, hopefully they'll read the broadcaster and say, yeah, I, I'm open for suggestions on how else to do it. I am amazed sometimes that what goes in the plane talk doesn't seem to reach everybody.
Uh, recommendation, I was.
You can drive around.
Drive around. You're gonna pay for the gas.
What was that, Phyllis?
A recommendation we're always given through the arts is actually your, uh, church service Sunday bulletin. I don't know if that's an option to.
A, a Sunday bulletin?
Do they still have them? I don't know. At.
At church.
At churches.
Wow.
I was told that people, well, I won't go on with that, that it was a really effective way to reach people if they have them in their church.
Right now it's kind of tough. Cause like at our church, we, uh, everybody's in on Zoom meetings yet.
Okay. Wasn't sure if that existed yet.
I think it's a Facebook live plus, uh, uh, Zoom at our church at least.
And I've asked our committee members if they have a personal Facebook page to, uh, put it on theirs as well.
Dan?
Uh, Clay County Historical Society would also offer to put that on their website and webpage if you would like.
Sure. Thank you.
I'll put it on Vermillion Underground. Yeah, there's a site called Facebook site Vermillion Underground. And I'll put it on there too.
Underground?
Sounds sketchy, does it?
I mean, it's just amazing how many people are on it regularly. I mean, it's surprising, um, how, how many people and, and you reach a different demographic.
Still sounds sketchy, but go ahead.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right now.
Yeah.
Well, I just, you know, I'm listening and, um, uh, yeah, it sounds great that we're, that you guys are doing the, the 18th meeting. So I guess the, the intent is to have that meeting and then when, is it going to be a formal meeting or the commission at all? So when are you going to get back um, together to decide on which, which option, I guess? And I guess I, or maybe I should back up a little bit and ask, there's not an intent to put three options to vote, right? It's going to be one, one option, right? Okay. That's what I assumed.
You might want to introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. Yes, yes. Tom, Tom Gorman from Collier Securities used to be Doherty and Company. And Mike Doherty, um, decided to finally retire and, and, uh, got his name off the door and, and they found another company to take Doherty in. And basically it's the same company, just under a new name. And, uh, same people, um, been doing this for 29 years in the state. So a lot of, a lot of history, um, a lot of, a lot of bond issues, uh, I've been working, worked on in the past. So, um, so anyway, so I'm, I'm here to answer any questions. Uh, interest rates are very good right now. I guess I would ask also at that meeting, um, you know, when everyone looks at the pretty pictures, the second question after they look at all the, all the different options and designs is, is, you know, what, what's it going to cost? So, um, you know, I have numbers for that or can prepare numbers for that. But we should be prepared to answer that question, you know, on Thursday, the 18th.
I agree.
Dick, you ever going to meet with the architects and get, uh, get the original estimates, uh, firmed up? Have you been able to?
Yeah, we've got another, another, uh, basically all day work session tomorrow, you know, kind of vetting through all that. And, um, I'm pretty confident we're going to have, you know, I, I call unusually good numbers because we've developed these, you know, that we've had so many different options that we've vetted out every which way. We've got really, you know, detailed thorough pricing on it. So at each one of these, uh, stations, we'll have a, we'll have what the project will cost. It'll be the construction, uh, you know, design, soft costs, those kinds of things and furnishings. We'll try and have, you know, a comprehensive number that shows, uh, what the, the budget is. Now this is based off of schematic, I'm sorry, conceptual design. It's not even to the schematic point yet. Uh, so, uh, what we all always suggest on these is when you do the language for, uh, the, the resolution on it is, is have it, that it goes up to, it goes up to a certain number. Um, an approval for having going up to that number. But then the goal is that when we work through the process, that we, we, you know, do everything, you know, possible, you know, pull that down and bring all these things back to the, uh, the committee and to the commissioners and say, is this how you want to spend the money? Uh, just making sure. Cause just once we get on the, the, once the bond gets approved and we, you know, we go ahead with this, there's still all the heavy lifting to do to get it, you know, within that budget and to make sure it's, it's how you want to spend the money.
Give us some nice big note cards, uh, during the presentation, Dick.
Your microphone, Dick.
Excuse me? Sorry about that. Yeah. Make sure we've got some nice big note cards for folks to write on during these. I've been, been on both sides of the table on these sorts of things. And sometimes they get a little wordy and, uh, hard to read, hard to read their responses. So.
Okay. I think this would make one comment on it. I don't know if I've been involved in a project that's had, uh, you know, the, that's looked at this many schemes in this much detail. So I think we've got very good information for the voters to, to draw upon in terms of what all has been considered. So yeah, we'll have, we'll have, I think, I feel real good about having been sort of prepared for this now. Cause we've got, uh, it's, you know, we've been, been at it, at it a long time and got good partners to work with. And I think we have, have real good information. I just hope a lot of people show up so they can really, we can just show the information that's, that we've, uh, developed here.
You know, one question I have, and I'm, I'm not actually sure who can answer it, um, is about our bonding capacity. Um, you know, I know that there are state restrictions, um, on, um, on this, this kind of thing. Um, and you know, sometimes a bond issue, I mean, I've seen places where the, you know, bond issues have hit up against those restrictions. And I want to make sure we're not, we're not even close to that.
Right. Your, your, um, bonding limit is five percent of your assessed value, not taxable value, but assessed value. So before the factored value.
Yep. Thank you.
So in reality, if you're at a billion dollars, you can do five percent of that. So that would be, you know, $50 million. And you're over a billion dollars. I don't know what your 20, pay 21 assessed value is. I don't want to put, Carrie on the spot. She probably can tell me what her taxable value is, but, um, the director of equalization probably has your assessed value. And that's what the five percent is actually figured on. So which is usually higher than, should be higher than your taxable value because that's a factored value.
Oh, very helpful.
The other thing I would encourage the commissioners to do is to look at other options besides this bond. Uh, there may be other vehicles that we can use. The fund is saying get it, uh, get it. An expert by any means. Um, I know, uh, when the new city hall was constructed, there was a procedure that they used. It seemed to work quite well. Dan, was that a, do you remember, was that a lease purchase thing? So there, there might be other options that I would encourage the commissioners to take a look at.
I, I would visit with Mike Carlson at City Hall. If you have any questions about how that was put together, I'm sure he'd be very helpful also.
The other thing we could do is start buying lottery tickets and see if we can get the big one.
I, uh, I actually worked on that, uh, the new city hall with, with Mike Carlson. So yes, we did do a lease purchase. And that would be an option here, but if you're going to a vote, the, the, the lowest interest rate you're going to get is with Geo bonds. They use sales tax to pay off their lease purchase. And it was, it's really a way for a city, um, to do something that doesn't count against their five percent debt limit. And it, and it could be used in this category too, but you're, you're under your five percent. So there isn't really a, you know, a need to look to the lease purchase necessarily, but it is an avenue. But it is an avenue if you want to pursue that. If it was a smaller, if you guys decide on the smaller bond issue, personally, I'd say, you know, you could, or the, the smaller size of $12 million, that's your decision. You know, you can probably do that with a lease purchase and wouldn't have to incur the cost of a vote if you think you have strong support. So that's, that's one of the avenues that's available under a lease purchase. There's no requirement for a vote. But if you're picking the larger issue, the $44 million issue or thereabouts, you probably, you know, you want to stick to that. You can't, I don't think that'll fit under a lease purchase. It'll be under your debt limit, but you're, you're limited to what you can levy with a lease purchase. You're only able to levy up to the 90 cents per thousand in your building fund, which is the limit. And I don't know if that would cover your costs, your debt service on an annual basis. So I think we looked at that way back. But, but anyway, those, those are things we could look at if dependent upon, again, which project you decide to go where. And that was, I guess, another question. When would the, when would the commission decide on the project itself? Would that be at your next meeting?
At the latest, it'll be the 30th.
Right, okay. Because we talked about the fact that you need a language out there for the election, and that has to be available by the first, so it can be on the, the primary ballot.
So we can have the language written, and then we just, I mean, to get that much out of the way, and then we can just insert the dollar amount, correct?
Right. Yeah, well, and, and after this meeting, I, I think I told Carrie that I'd go back to Bond Council, talk to Todd Meyer Henry, and we would, we'd draft up the resolution for this with all the election packet information. And, and again, you leave that kind of blank, you know, which option you wanted, the description of the option. But on the, on the ballot question, we'll, you know, you have to have the description of the project. You have to have the term, and you have to have, let's see, term, dollar, and dollar amount. So, yeah, you can do, and Dick talked about, you can do up to $44 million or whatever, but if you put that on a ballot, everyone's gonna assume that you're gonna be doing Option C or Option A, you know, whatever the option is for the most expensive one. So, yeah, that, we typically do that. We also mention that we do, we also put language in there for one or more series of bonds because depend upon what the lead time is on final design, you may want to do a small bond issue to start with, a bank qualified issue. You know, not to get into the weeds too much, but we could do a small bank qualified issue under $10 million to take care of some of the, all the costs you've incurred up to this point and, and get the ball rolling on, on final design and then, and then do the balance of it later on so you're not getting the full amount and incurring interest expense on day one, I guess, is what I'm saying. So that's another technique that we've used, and, and we put that language in the resolution also. But the key is, obviously, we want to be able to get the, the bond election question ferreted out with the state's attorney here and get Bond Council to put that together and have, I guess we can probably get it done and just drop in the dollar amount in the, the actual project on the 30th if you want. And, and then the state's attorney will already have signed off on all that. But we don't want to leave them out. We'll make sure they sign off on the documents. We're ready to go. So you have the final document if you act on the 30th, you know, for the, for the election.
And there's our state's attorney.
Oh, there you go. I want to speak for her.
So can I ask one question? What do you recommend in terms of term for bonds?
Well, right now, interest rates, even though if anyone follows interest rates, I don't know if any bankers share, but interest rates have been bumping up. We've got, we're backed on a kind of an upward trend over the last two months. But they, I brought up, I brought a nice little graph here I can pass out to everybody and. But relative to where interest rates have been, just going back even a year, a year and a half, we're still in a very good, a very good spot. Actually, I reran the numbers. I ran back last year for, and, and we actually had a $44 million option. And I think, I think the levy at that time was $2.05, and it's dropped now. I'm projecting your levy around $197. So it's actually improved by 8 cents per thousand, which, you know, isn't small potatoes if you own a million dollar piece of property or $500,000 piece of property. So, so interest rates have actually gotten a little better. You can see there, there's a, I've got a history. The graph is mine. The data points are from the bond buyer. The bond buyer is kind of like our Wall Street Journal in the municipal bond industry. You've got, this is the 20 Bond Index, which is basically looking at A-rated bonds, 20-year A-rated bonds, and that's how the yield curve looks. It actually goes back to like the 1890s. They did them quarterly back then. Now they do it weekly. They put out a yield. And, and I broke it out, made it, it's, gets a little, if you look at the most current area on the front page, it, it gets really tight there. So what I did is I broke it out, took it back to 2007, the last great recession, and you can kind of see how it, how it's changed, you know, and where we're at relative to where I might consider average bond yields, you know, between the 3% to 4% range, that, that scale. We're actually below that. So we're, we're still at historically low interest rates is the, what I'm trying to leave you with here. 60, 60 to 65-year lows in interest rates.
So that would argue for a long-term.
And back to your question, 25 years on something like this, we did the jail for Minniac County. That was 25 years. You know, a lot of, a lot of projects, you know, typically 25. GEO bonds, you know, I always put this out there. I've never sold one, can go 50 years, never. I've never, general obligation bonds, GEO bonds, I've never sold a bond that long. Sold some 30-year bonds, you know, we could even do 30-year if you want. Most people don't feel comfortable after 25. So that's, that's usually the longest. What's that?
Why is that?
I think, I think a lot of people like to see it, and I say a lot of people, I'm talking about commissioners, really, and then even the general public. I think 25 years is, you know, a kind of a generation. So you're, you're acting on this, and by the time the next generation moves in, you know, a generation is what, 30 years, 35 years? It's already been paid off, you know, so you can, it's a generational thing, and, and it's already paid off. It's actually paid off early, but I think that's, that's it. Interest rates starts to compound even more, even at these low interest rates, you know, you start to look at that there's between how much you're paying in interest between a 20 and 25. It even grows more, it's almost exponential how it grows from 30 or 25 to 30. So that's, the people shy away from that.
Carrie, Dick does not. He's in the waiting room. But 30 makes the payment easier.
30 definitely makes payment easier. The numbers that I just kind of just spitball did, the 197 was based on 25. So if you want to go 30, we can do 30. Interest rates on that will still be very good. They'll be below what I would say, again, what are average interest rates, so if you wanted to go 30. And again, we can do it like, like Dick mentioned on the dollar amounts. We can do up to on the turn in the bond resolution, up to 30 years. But again, if you're, if you're showing a voter 30 years, they're expecting probably you're gonna do 30 years. And if you shorten it up on them, that might make them, you know, not happy because, again, like you said, the cash flow for them, that raises their, their yearly tax, even though it may cost you less over time. So, you know, those are some of the things that have to be conveyed to the public.
And we can always pay it off early.
And you can always pay it off early. But as I tell people, if you tell them you're gonna do 30 years and you're taxing them, the only way you can pay it off early is, I mean, it'd be one thing if you're doing like sales tax bonds, and you had years where you had better sales tax than you projected, but you're doing, you're doing tax bonds. So if you're paying it off early, it means you've overtaxed the public in some of those years or something, you know, to generate enough revenue to, to have a balance to be able to pay it off early. Does that make sense?
Sort of.
But if a big company moves in here and your valuations go way up, you know, and we call that real growth. So if your real growth goes way up, you know, and you kept your levy the same, then you're gonna actually generate a little bit more revenue, but, but all things being equal.
Because that's what I was gonna ask. If, if our valuations go up, do people's tax number go down then? I mean, if we, if we wanted to collect a million dollars a year and businesses move in or houses get built.
Right.
Does, does an individual person's tax bill go down then on that bond?
Yes, it does. Yes.
Adjusted, okay.
So what we call that is real growth. I mean, instead of just inflationary growth, inflationary growth, in essence, is the same dollars out of everybody's pocket, even though your, your house may go from $200,000 to $210,000 next year. Then the levy goes down to reflect that. But if your house, if your house stays at $200,000, but the, the overall just, or county valuation goes up by 10%, and 5% of that is real growth, it's new construction, then you're gonna see a 5% decrease in your taxes.
And that's something we have to decide on every year to love, to either leave it there or to lower it?
Right. Okay, yeah. Most people lower it just because then, you know, they get the break of that. They get the break of that real growth. Yeah.
Move the microphone.
Bob, we plan on you chairing the next expansion on this.
I think that's 25 years old.
So start eating better. Any others? Okay. And I am, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I was just gonna say, my two cents is that, is that the idea of having a specific, not, and I thought we were gonna have it at this meeting, but having a specific meeting on the 18th at 7 o'clock, advertising it, getting everybody to come, this was already on the agenda the other day. So if anyone's following this knows that it was here, and now you're gonna have a meeting on the 18th. I think that's the key to this because you're still always gonna get those one or two people that are like, I didn't know this was happening. This is crazy. Why are you acting on something like this? But for the most part, you don't want the majority of people having the same thought. Because that's, that's a, that's kind of, you gotta get over that hurdle right away if people think it's coming too fast. And I know, I guess there was a survey that was done, so people have got the survey. That's awesome. So it's, I think you guys cleared that hurdle, but, you know, we'll see the 18th, I guess, what happens. But, but it's, you're, you're doing a great job.
One other question I have is about the saleability of bonds. As you go out to 30 years, does that make bonds less saleable?
No, if these, these are, these will be GEO bonds, general obligation bonds, tax-backed in South Dakota. That's an unlimited tax. So if half your valuation somehow got up and left the county, you could raise your taxes as high as you like. That's very marketable. So that's, that's not, that's not gonna be an issue. And then you'll have, we'll get these Moody's rated. They cost a little bit more, but they have a little bit better understanding of our tax structure and how things work in South Dakota. And most counties are A-rated. We did the jail for Brookings County, and they were, they, they received a double A1. I was actually surprised because that's, that's the same rating that Minniac County has, and it's the same rating that, that Pennyton County has. I was expecting a double A2. So double A1 is the next step to triple A. So it's the second highest ratings out there. I expect you guys to be in the double. It sounds like your audit was great, so that's good, you know, having good, clean audits is always a good thing when you're going to a rating agency, and, and you don't have any debt outstanding, really. I mean, you know, nothing like this. So that, that'll bode well. So it's, and you've got a good tax base, especially with the university here and in the county. That, that's really, that does well. You're diversified. You've got some rural, but you're not all rural. You're not all A. So it'll, you'll get, I'm, I'm almost sure you'll get at least a double A2, which is kind of the middle, maybe a double A1. So back to your question, long answer to a short question. They'll be marketable, you know, with that rating and with, you know, with the, with the, the security that you have.
Just look at the amount of growth this town's had in the last five, 10 years. I mean, out here on the bypass, my gosh.
Move the microphone to, Bob.
Okay. I'm done.
He was just talking about the growth that we've had in the last five to 10 years.
Okay, great.
And I know we don't have a meeting scheduled till the 30th, but if we need, we'll have one. So that option's still there. Does anybody have anything else for us on this? Hearing done. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
And then Lexi, you weren't here, but they will be in touch with you on the.
Great, thank you.
I'm sure you know Tom.
Yes, yes, I know. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So do I get to contest?
I don't know. We'll send that to Mr. Cal.
Well, since I'm Alexis.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I wasn't paying attention. She was Alexis, it says.
Did you email?
Yeah, curious.
Anyway, nonetheless, sounds great.
Thank you very much. You have any questions, you can call.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks, Bob.
Grant policy discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody want to skip a week yet?
I thought we did. I thought we called that out.
I almost didn't put it on the agenda, thinking that the building discussion was gonna take a lot longer, but I did add it, so.
You want to do the stuff at the bottom of the page first?
Yeah.
Before we start that, because.
Before we forget.
Before we get tired.
Do you want to jump right to a journ or what?
Yeah. That was on my mind, but I guess you guys let me do that.
So did everybody get to see the vouchers?
Yeah. I had, I had a couple of very minor questions. See if I can find them in my list here. There were, I was trying to figure out why we're making a payment to Blue Tarp Financial. It says cross-slide drill. It's for $354.99. Blue Tarp Financial is a, it's a credit company.
That would be a good question for the highway department, and of course, Rod's not here.
Yeah, and then.
I can certainly have Jess bring the bill down if you want to take a look at it.
Well, I mean, that, I, I, I just don't understand why it's, it's a, it's a, you know, Blue Tarp Financial is a, a credit organization. So then the other one was the, let's see, First Source Advantage, which is a debt collection service. And I wasn't sure why we'd be paying a debt collection service.
Not sure what that one is either.
That was.
That one's mine.
Okay.
In that case, there, we had an account with Walmart, which was a synchrony bank. And we had a bill I brought up, and the check was sent directly to Walmart in Vermillion. And the check never got sent to the bank. And then a few months went by of trying to get that resolved, and they turned us over to collections. So then, then I forwarded it to the auditor to pay the collections company.
Okay. So then the, the only other question would be the Blue Tarp Financial. You know, why we're paying a financial services firm. It's just odd, you know.
I will have Jess bring it down. I am not sure. I know that it's the highway department, and I know that we have routinely paid them in the past, so I'm not sure if there's something that we're leasing or what that is exactly. So let me just have her bring that. While we're waiting for that, too, the, the one that Andy was talking about, Jess was actually able to go out to Walmart and physically get the cash from them for that check, so that was nice. And she says she is bringing that down, so she should be done in just a minute with that.
Okay, we're waiting for that. The 2020 annual report. Everybody get to look through that?
Yeah. We need a motion to set that. We don't, do we?
I don't think so.
That's just for information.
Yeah, just for your information.
Yeah, for me, that was really helpful, you know, because I, it just gave me a sense of how, how it all could. Yeah, for me, that was really helpful, you know, cuz I, it just gave me a sense of how, how it all concludes at the end of the year.
Okay, this'll make more sense. So purchased through Northern Tool, and it is a drill. So it looks like that Blue Tarp Financial is the, like, store charge account holder for Northern Tool and Equipment.
Oh, so, so they're the, the billing agency?
Right.
That may, no, that makes sense to me. Don't need to.
That's okay. I just knew that they routinely use them. I couldn't place what it was for, so.
Yep.
Looks good. Like I said, I knew it was a vendor that we've paid routinely. I just couldn't think what that would be for, but it looks like it is for store charge for tools.
Yeah, they're just handling the accounts for them.
Yeah.
So did we need a motion to accept the vouchers?
I think we did, didn't we? Cuz then we're, Betty brought up the.
Okay.
Didn't we have a motion in a second on the vouchers?
I don't think so. I don't have one.
Oh, well, I'll move. I'm moving. I moved payments.
Sorry.
If I, I, I don't know if, if there was, I missed it in the, with the discussion.
That's fine. We'll just start again.
I'll make motion to accept the vouchers.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mahler.
Yes. Motion approved. Now to the grant policy.
Where did we leave off? I can't remember.
Uh, the top of page 12. Grant sub-recipient monitoring procedures.
I got it down, buddy. I was trying to move it along.
Right then, where my signature required.
Okay. I'm getting, plain I don't like grants. I'll turn it on there. Grant procedures. I guess in the first line there, just strike federal again. And federal programs in the title. Does that sound right?
So just take that out, or just, how about grant, grant programs, and then grant funding?
Yeah.
And then subsection two, conditions of the grant funding award?
Yes.
Then under section A, for purposes of policies and procedures related to grant programs?
Yep.
Yep.
So then on those next sections, contract, contractor pass through. Are we leaving the federals in there?
I think we need to.
So you're looking at those sections like sub-award and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That just talks about the money coming from, cuz if we gave money as a county, we wouldn't be the sub-recipient.
Yeah.
And then I think we're. Think we're good until we get to section C1. Then we'll wanna change that one, I believe, to. Grant award identification information.
Under contractors, there's another federal in there that we might, you know, be contractors that we might wanna make grant award. Because we oughta, you know, maintain oversight over contractors, for example, that do DOT, you know, DOT, when DOT is giving out the contract. We have a lot of state awards, huh?
So.
That's bad.
Right after the, that sentence, right after the little 28 there, footnote 28. And then that next one, bonding requirements shall be imposed. There's a federal towards the end of that.
Yeah, that, that has to stay.
Okay.
But it's just the federal award that.
Okay.
Before that, maybe just make it grant award, because again, we want it to be broader.
Sure.
Are we on section one now, Carrie, or off C?
Yeah.
So all those. Roman numeral ones, we need to change, like, federal award to what?
Grant award.
Grant award identification number. Is there such a thing? I mean, they said they got.
For federal ones, there is. For state ones, they usually don't, like, federal will give it what they call a CFDA number. State awards don't have that. So maybe we wanna leave federal on that one.
Okay.
On four, we could probably change that to grant award date of award to the recipient by the granting agency.
Good.
And six, we could say amount of grant funds obligated by this action.
And seven would be the same way. Total amount of the grant award committed. Oops.
Looks like seven and eight then.
Yeah.
It really doesn't matter if they're in or out, since this is all federal award notification.
Yeah, that's the heading for this.
Yeah. That's true.
Doesn't particularly apply to anything else other than federal awards.
Yep. Um, under C, evaluation of risk, should it be the auditor or designee responsible for evaluating risk?
Under C. Okay.
So second paragraph, under C, evaluation of risk. It's marked up in purple, but we don't have a, I mean, Carrie, I think, I think you're as close as we come to a finance officer.
So county auditor or designee. So then, on two through six above that, are we leaving the federals there then?
Do we need to put in an alternative that, okay, this is federal award identification information. Is there anything we need to put in for other grants identification? This is a question. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, this is really, this part looks very specific to federal grants. Because it's the county shall provide the sub-recipient with the following information regarding federal funding award at the time of the sub-award. And that is, you know, a technical requirement that I don't think is required by any other level of government.
So then.
I mean.
On section one, with little Roman numerals there, are we leaving those as they were then?
I would say yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Makes sense.
As well as the two through five, six. If you're reading it as it only applies to federal.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're right, Phyllis. Throw down to the next heading, you mean?
So going back to evaluating risk. In the, it looks like the third paragraph, under the numbers. Again, it says department director or designee shall request adequate documentation, but in this case, it would be the grant administrator.
Yep.
Or designee. Yeah, so under D, monitoring, it looks like, Carrie, you highlighted May.
Yeah, I think, I think Lexi highlighted that.
I'm wondering, actually, back up to see if. Okay, the very first sentence, county shall evaluate, or the grant administrator. To determine appropriate monitoring practices. And bid awards or acceptance. Normally, that goes right if you're contracting out with a subcontractor that you work on this prior to giving them the, the award, not after, I mean, some after the fact, but. Does that make sense to anyone?
What, what language would you use, Phyllis?
Uh, let's see. Of the sub-award to determine appropriate monitoring prac, um, to appropriate award of bids and subsequent monitoring practices. Basically, you do not have to go with the low bid if you can say that this is someone that is not appropriate to be hiring. It's a protection.
So you said acceptance of bid and subsequent monitoring.
Microphone?
Or, sorry, I had it on and I pushed the button to shut it off, thinking I was trying. So you said appropriate acceptance of bid and subsequent monitoring practices. Right?
Or you could say to determine the acceptability of bids and appropriate monitoring practices. Cuz I, I think, is that, is that what you're getting at, Phyllis, that we ought to consider risk evaluation in choosing bids? So.
Awarding, yeah.
To just, okay, say that again, to determine.
The acceptability of bids and appropriate monitoring practices.
Okay, oh, yeah, okay. You guys need to move a little more often.
We're still here.
Yeah, so under D, monitoring, it uses this very general, the county shall monitor. And since this is our policy, I wonder if should be the grant administrator shall monitor. I mean, isn't that kind of what we wanna have happen, is that each grant administrator does the monitoring of their grants?
In the second paragraph, they start to decide who, or designate who would do that, right?
Yep. So we could just change department director to grant administrator.
Yeah.
And then in that paragraph above, are we changing the highlighted May to shall? Are we leaving that?
I was looking back to see if I could find any further notes to myself about why I circled that May and started, you know. Because typically, I would wanna do the opposite, change a shall to a may. So I don't know why I, why that was important to me at that time. And was just thinking, if we have any current funds that we've farmed out to anybody else that we're concerned about reporting requirements back, I mean, then providing them technical assistance, would that be something that would help that with that? But I mean, if we don't have any, anything that we're concerned about, I guess I would just move on from that. I don't, I don't remember why I started that.
Being the shall is everywhere else. It seems appropriate to have a shall there.
Well, so here's, here's why I don't wanna do that. And then maybe I started just to be like, hey, just keep in mind, we don't have this on.
on as an obligation. Because, you know, then we're going to get Erickson and everything else looped in. And I would give an example, I guess, functionally, on, is it the Historical Society that we do some type of sub grant? Historical preservation. Okay. So, I mean, then essentially, from my perspective, they're going to get some free tech service via us, and where does that end? That's kind of a broad term of may provide technical assistance to sub recipients. Does that deal with computer equipment, software, reporting, training? Tech, if they're having internet issues? So, I mean, that's just really broad. So I, I do like leaving it as may, and it might have just been to be like, hey, this isn't required, they're going to have to figure out some of this on their own.
Yeah.
Yep.
The responsibility squarely on us.
Yeah, we don't want to.
And I will agree with that and come from the angle they brought forward. It's the Historic Preservation Commission actually is provided training by the state historic society as to what is required. So that may should stay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we might want to change the last sentence to make it clear. The county shall verify that sub recipients of federal grants are audited as required by.
Okay.
Good tip.
And again, under follow-up actions, it's not the department head, it would be the grant administrator or designee.
That last paragraph of section D2 would be the same thing, grant administrator.
There's, let's see, where is this? Okay, page 17. The second. Or the first full paragraph or the second. County shall require sub recipients to take immediate action on issues eligible or illegal use of funding. Remove. The federal.
Sure.
That's sort of circular too, isn't it? County shall require sub recipients to notify the county.
Putting the responsibility on them to take action and then notify us that they have done it, so.
The way it reads, we notify ourselves.
No, the sub recipient doesn't necessarily have to be, it would be a department or, or other.
Yeah, so it, the county shall require sub recipients to take action and to notify the county of corrective action taken.
Yeah, that's better.
Last change.
So read to me again how you want that to read. The county shall require sub recipients.
Yeah, I think it's just take out federal. The county shall require sub recipients to take immediate action on issues involving ineligible or illegal use of funding and to notify the county of corrective action taken.
Just wanted to make sure we weren't changing any other words in there.
Yeah. It's a little unclear the way it is, really should have two sentences.
And then, under the paragraph that starts, the department director or designee shall maintain all documentation, so it's the last section of D. I think we already changed department director to grant administrator. And. The second to the last line, we should probably take out federal, because any non-compliance you would want reported to, you know, the granting agency.
So change federal to granting?
Yeah.
Okay. And then take out federal in that last little part.
Requirements of the funding program.
By the way, thank you Zoom spirits, hopefully I'm not saying too fast, for keeping with us this time.
Yep.
Thank Erickson's for that. I'll be able to stick, there's a new little piece of equipment behind you there.
Oh, so it's not a fluke.
No. They are on the ball.
Look, more wires.
Yep, more wires, though, unfortunately.
So are we to G then, on record retention?
Yep.
I think so.
And it'd be. What was it? Were we changing department director to recipient?
Yep. Grand administrator.
Now it looks like a good place to stop.
So then where that last sentence continues on the next page, specific requirements of the grant program?
Yep.
Yeah.
And then stop.
Hey, we're more than halfway done.
We can get done next time.
I think some of the last stuff, if I remember, goes fairly, some of it's got Pennington County in it.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's going to be part of ours.
Yeah, all those little Penningtons will be switched to Clay's. I might have missed some of them in there, so. We'll get them on the next round, I guess.
Yeah. In page wise.
All right.
Is anybody, I guess we're, there's no joint, there'll be a joint jurisdiction meeting Thursday, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
A motion in a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Eckler.
Yes, motion, meeting adjourned.
Yeah, 33 pages total, so.
There are signature pages down there, so.
Yeah.
Oh, before we totally cut off here, I would like to remind you guys, April 13th for equalization boards. We usually have that at 1:00. Is that going to work?